Board of Education will reconvene at this time. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Welcome. Everybody's waiting for the big snowstorm.
I'm not.
Thank you for coming this evening. Is there a motion to approve the agenda?
I move approval of the agenda as presented with the removal of recognitions from this meeting and ask that those be placed on another agenda.
Okay. We have a motion. Do we have a second?
I second it.
Everyone in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone oppose? The ayes have it. All right, moving along. For the purposes of time and the weather, board members, please give your board reports to the secretary so they will be included on the record for this evening's meeting. So we'll just move on along with, next it would be the superintendent's report. Dr. Mariano?
Okay, I will try to move through this as quickly as I can recognizing the concerns this evening. My first topic this evening has to do with snow and inclement weather. And so I'm going to bring the community up to speed on this and I had great intentions of putting out a press release regarding where we were and plans that we were going to advance to the board, but that has been pulled at the last minute because of the possible events that are going to appear in our county this evening which would cause some adjustments for tomorrow as well. Now, I'm not saying that that's going to occur tomorrow, for those students who are in the audience who are smiling back at me greatly, but let me just bring you up to speed. As you know, board members, we take into consideration many variables in terms of closing school. And first and foremost of our decision-making is the safety of our young people. When we have close to 18,000 young people, the majority of which are transported by bus, we have a number of them, the high schoolers who are transporting themselves by car as young drivers. We have several thousand employees who are then transporting individuals who come in from out of county and then as well as a number of parents that are moving. So when we figuratively start the school system engine up every morning, it's quite a lot of movement in the county and we always err on the side of safety. The storm that came in last week, I don't need to recapitulate that with everybody, but it was quite an incredible storm for all of us, but the fact that combined with the cold air causes to close for the total of the whole week last week, those total of four days. So those of you who are following along understand that we have built in five official days to the calendar. We have allow a sixth day in the calendar because we have a professional development day on May 2nd in our calendar, which is, if you look at the fine print of your calendar, a makeup day if needed. So my plan this evening, and it is the plan this evening, is that so far we've used six days, we built five in, we have six built in, we've used six, excuse me, we're even right now. If we use the, make the adjustment to the calendar for March or May 2nd being a day we would be in school. So if we follow that logic, that's all fine and good with the exception of any further inclement weather days. So as it stands now, the five we've built in, we've used. I'm now going to use the one in May, so there will be school on May 2nd, that's six. Day seven, eight, or any others from there will be either tacked on at the end, or the possibility exists that I could apply for a waiver from the State Board of Education justifying our great concerns. And I think we have a case for that based upon the fact of the concerns we have with plowing the back roads, the incredible cold temperatures that hit the state, the issues of concern that presents us. So I'm going to allow that to continue to roll out. There's nothing for us to do immediately in terms of other days on the calendar, we just have to wait and see, but there are things that we can do to adjust that calendar. Do recognize that people always question the fact of the number of days. State law requires that young people are in school 180 days. We have contractual agreements that we have to follow with our teachers and staff and as it stands now, we hope that we have no more further inclement weather, but as I stated to one of our reporters, if a, another event presents itself, we will make the best decision in terms of safety, not the number of days that we've used thus far. And so as I look to the community right now, I continue to appreciate your patience and your trust in our decision-making. I encourage you to continue to make people be very clear when they say, you know, why are they closing school, or you know, when I was a child, you know, we went up to, we went to school, we walked uphill both ways with no shoes. You know, there's all kinds of different stories. When you have a county as large as ours and there's back roads and several of you in here have driven buses and know about all of that, our back roads are very treacherous. I rode the roads personally on Fri, on Thursday. We were out on Wednesday, Mr. Clemmets and myself, and the roads were very treacherous on those days, quite frankly, and we were very concerned about the back roads. And so I would rather lose a day of school as opposed to jeopardize and put a life in jeopardy in that sense. So safety is always our main issue. We're going to continue to monitor that because we can always make up a school day, but we cannot make up any kind of loss of life or injury of an individual. So we take these very serious and I continue to encourage and indulge the, ask for the patience of our community as we're all working and navigating our way through these inclement weather days. And it's not even the end of January yet. Sometimes our worst events can occur in February, as they say. So let's hope for no snow tonight. I did hear it's snowing in Ridge. Is that true, Mr. Clemmets?
And in Hollywood.
Well, it can stay there. Until I hear snow in Hollywood, California maybe or react, then it will be an event. So I wanted to give you that piece of information. We have weathered these storms very well as far as the building, et cetera. We did have a water main break on January 7th during the inclement weather and the cold weather during that time. We were able to mitigate that and open the school then shortly thereafter the next day. Soup cook-off has been canceled. Everything has been rescheduled. We had a wonderful day today with our board hearing. If I haven't told you lately, if I haven't told any of you, did you hear about the graduation rate in St. Mary's County? It's 91.5%, the highest ever. I say that sort of joking this evening because I spent a whole hour and a half on this this afternoon announcing how exciting that is to our community. The overall graduation rate is 91.5% and that is the highest ever. And to frame that, you know, the state of Maryland is 86%. In the United States, it's 78%. So we're in very high, our school system is high performing and we're very pleased about that, but we had that presentation today. There are a number of other items that I have as well, but I think I can suspend those until the next time. Want to continue to encourage people to donate to the shoe fund and thank those who have. I will be reading those, that comprehensive list at the next board meeting because there's an additional list, I understand, coming down from finance as well on that, so we'll do that as one big issue. And I was talking to several people today, including my wife, about the fact of individuals who do donate to the shoe fund. This is money that is donated specifically to provide shoes for the children in St. Mary's County. So no matter how much that is, if somebody were to write a check for $20 for the shoe fund, that's $20 that's going to go to the school system fund, that's going to go directly to buy a pair of shoes that will go on the feet of young people in St. Mary's County. There's no overhead, no administrative cost. That money, 100% of it goes directly to buy those shoes. And Dr. Ridgell oversees that with the PPWs and we are just pleased with how many pairs of shoes we're able to put on our young people. And this is a personal quest of all of us is to make certain we're doing everything we can to close that poverty gap, to provide shoes and clothing for our young people as well as for food, as far as free reduced meals and breakfast in our schools. And it's interesting, over these snow days, I had several emails from our principals who said, "We appreciate the fact of taking safety into consideration." They were very concerned about the safety of their students and several of them said they were concerned about their students being fed during the times that we were off. So we take that into consideration as well. And I just want to thank the community. I'm absolutely blessed to live and work in St. Mary's County and absolutely pleased with the outpouring of support that we have for our school system, for our children and the work that we do. And it makes the work so rewarding when you see students today, as we were talking about the achievement and the graduation rates, all three of our high schools at the highest level. And it's just very satisfying work is to give on behalf of the benefit of young people and the less fortunate in our community. So on that note, Dr. Raspa, with great humbleness and sincerity, I'm very proud to report this information today as well as pass it back to you.
Thank you, sir. Thank you very much. Next on the agenda is a public hearing. The public hearing this evening is to hear testimony on the High School Program of Studies and Policies ECG, EFN, EFA. Madam Secretary, has anybody signed up to give testimony in the public hearing?
Yes, for the High School Program of Studies.
For the High School Program of Studies, okay. Just bear with me while I read the public comment statement. "The Board welcomes input, public input on policies and issues affecting our schools. The Board takes this time to listen and consider, but not to comment. This is not, however, the appropriate forum for negative comments or criticisms of individual staff or students. Concerns about individual staff members that cannot be resolved at the level closest to the situation should be directed to the superintendent. This Board will not permit comments criticizing individual staff or students since this is outside the scope of public comment. Additionally, the Board sits as an appellate body in both student and employee appeals. The Board cannot comment on or have prior knowledge of a case that would influence their ability to deliberate. To maintain the ability of the Board to render a fair and unbiased decision, comments regarding individual student or personnel issues cannot be presented at public comment. Speakers must sign in at the beginning of the meeting. Public comment is limited to three minutes per speaker and speakers may not yield their time to someone else. The Board encourages speakers to present written statements to the Board Secretary who will distribute copies to all board members." Madam Secretary, first speaker.
Nathan Gamberling.
No, go to the podium, please. Thank you. That light should be on.
Okay, thank you. First, I'd like to start off with thanking everyone for their time this evening, the board and other members of the, not the board, the public. I'd like to start with my introduction. My name's Nathan Gamberling. I graduated high school at Leonardtown in 2012. First started FFA in 2010. It didn't technically exist. I was given the task to make it exist. So we worked and finally got it chartered, I believe in the fall of 2011 is what's on our certificate. So we chartered the FFA out of, out of, out of need from, you know, students who have wanted to be in it and from the Farm Bureau. So it was kind of a doubleheader of people who wanted this to happen. So we made it happen. We got the charter going. Now we're just trying to gain momentum. I'm no longer an active member, I'm too old, but I'm a senior advisor for the chapter, so I still am involved with what they do. And I know that they're doing pretty well, they're gaining momentum, but they're limited by the classes that they have right now. They only have two that you can attend that are agricultural certified that allow you to attend the program. So if this case program is adopted, it will add a third or possibly replace one. I'm not sure what's going to happen. But I know both classes, natural resources management and horticulture are trying to implement parts of the curriculum into the, their current classes to fill a need for that agricultural education that's not there currently. So I know that both classes utilize this information for students who are interested and for their own interest so that they can teach it, but it's kind of starting to stray a little bit, I guess, from what they're actually supposed to teach. So this would free up a lot of room in their curriculum to continue with their individual programs and allow for a third, more comprehensive curriculum for this individual agriculture education program. And I know there's a lot of students in the school system, 4-H members and people who want to farm, people who are currently, you know, farming and stuff, who want to, you know, gain more education, maybe someone who just likes animals. So I think there'd be a lot of interest in this program. And I think it's, funding wise, I think the, the initial fund would probably be the most. I think that it would probably sustain itself through different business opportunities and fundraisers. I know with the FFA, we, we did a lot of fun, we did as many fundraisers as we could given the time that we had and the restrictions on a fledgling club or organization. So I would like to, I'd like to thank you for your time and please consider this. Thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Charlie Sasser.
Hello, my name is Charlie Sasser III and I'm a junior at Gramos High School. I'm in the STEM program and I'm really interested into this program because I, I'm one of those kids that grows up on a farm. But knowing all I've learned from the farm, I see kids at my school who haven't grown up on a farm and they could really use a program. I see some of my peers, you know, they kind of show an interest for this kind of stuff, but really the far most exposure they get is biology and we have a little bit of environmental stuff and the teacher will hit on some agriculture. But I think a program like this would really be helpful in people who have that interest or who want to further their knowledge such as me or who just want to learn more and gain some knowledge about just how their food is grown and things like that. As far as FFA, I think, when I think of, when I thought of high school when I was younger, probably my biggest thing I've always wanted to, dream I've always wanted to accomplish in high school is I've always wanted to be an FFA. And so this program would, in addition to teaching about agriculture, would reinvigorate the FFA chapter. And I would like to be a participant in that. I don't know if I'm too old, but I'd like to help in whatever way I could. And you know, I really want to get to national convention because you know, I have, through 4-H, I've met a lot of people from across the state who they have FFA chapters at their schools and they always tell me about it and about the national convention and all the contests they do. And, I mean, it really sounds like fun and there's a lot of opportunities that students can benefit from. And I think since we are in such a rural county, but then we have a lot of urban opportunities and influences in the county, just an agriculture program would be a good way to kind of bring some of that rural knowledge back into the school system. So, you know, if you can make this happen, I'd really appreciate it as a student. I know there's a lot of people who would appreciate it. So thank you and I'll see what we can do.
Thank you.
Gabrielle Corey.
Good evening. My name is Gabrielle Corey and I'm representing St. Mary's County Farm Bureau and Maryland Farm Bureau as Ms. Maryland Agriculture. I'm 16 years old and currently in 11th grade at Leonardtown High School. I've lived in St. Mary's County my whole life and growing up around agriculture has had an important effect on me. My experiences with 4-H and Farm Bureau have opened my eyes and allowed me to realize what a diverse industry agriculture is. As a nine-year 4-H member carrying the projects of market learnings, public speaking, and leadership, I've been able to travel across the state and participate in various agricultural activities that have helped me grow into the person I am today. I'm here to express my support for putting agricultural education back into schools. The number one industry in Maryland is agriculture. St. Mary's County has strong roots reaching back to farming. With such a legacy, with 68,000 acres still in use, why not educate our future generation about opportunities that are available in the number one industry in Maryland? In schools, there used to be home economics classes that then were replaced by technology classes as this became more prominent. Along with these technology classes, science, technology, engineering, and math, often referred to as STEM, has really taken off because of our close proximity to Tuxent River Naval Air Station. It is grooming our future generation of local engineering workforce. While science, technology, engineering, and math have a promising future, so should agriculture. Agriculture that once started as labor in the fields has now grown into a greatly diverse and scientific industry. Students should be well informed of their career opportunities to allow agriculture to also have a promising future and provide St. Mary's County with a future legacy for future farming generations. There are currently FFA affiliated programs available for students in the Horticulture and Natural Resources Programs at the Dr. James A. Forrest Career and Technology Center. As a first year student at the Forrest Center in the Dental Assisting Program, but still with the interest in agriculture, I was looking forward to joining FFA. The case curriculum that will be implemented at the Forrest Center will lay the foundation for careers in agriculture as well as provide college preparation. Agriculture is just as important as technology because it is the first step in producing the food that we eat. We need to protect our number one industry and allow our generations to become more involved and engaged in agriculture and its many aspects. We ask that you please support the funding for the addition of an agricultural education in school. Agriculture has had a positive impact on my life and I support providing these opportunities for future generations in St. Mary's County public schools. It will be money well spent on our future generations. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
And give her a round of applause. I wanted to recognize her publicly for, as well as the other two so far, but Ms. Agriculture Maryland here. You know, one of our students from St. Mary's County, you know how proud I am of all of you, but I just wanted to acknowledge you personally for that major accomplishment as well. I want to say that publicly, we're so proud of you and it's just great to have you here tonight. And I might say that to the other speakers thus far as well, but I've been looking for that public opportunity to acknowledge you. You're just wonderful. Thank you.
James Rayly.
Good evening. My name is Jamie Rayly. I'm here tonight as president of St. Mary's County Farm Bureau. And I'd like to thank the school board and school staff for your efforts in getting the ag education program in your tentative budget to be submitted to the Board of County Commissioners. I think it speaks, speaks highly of the opportunities, and I've been hearing that word from our young people tonight, opportunities for young people. Because while we look forward to having more people engaged in agriculture, production agriculture, the curriculum for ag education and technology also wants to look for the next generation of, and future generations of veterinarians, ag economists, extension agents, people who are going to go out and teach other folks how to do what we do here in St. Mary's and around the world. Thank you very much to the young people who came here tonight to speak on behalf of us, of agriculture in the county, because those are the ones that are most important. Again, I appreciate it. I appreciate all the help of Mr. Michael Egan. He's been very, very helpful with keeping us informed about the progress of the program through, through the system. Again, thank you very much for your efforts and we appreciate it.
Thank you, Mr. Rayly.
Joseph Wood.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Joseph Wood and I have a small farm in Mechanicsville. I embrace this science and technology term that we're using for this curriculum and I kind of relate it back to an incident in my teenage years, very, very early teenage years I had with my grandfather. I was telling him that we should do this and we should do that and we should stop doing this and all this stuff. And he just kind of listened and turned to me and says, "You can't teach an old dog new tricks." So that's what I'm trying to say here, that we've got to start in the high schools and we've got to teach kids about the environment, the impact farming on the way we work the land, that it has the impact on the bay and everybody else around us. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Has anyone signed up for testimony on policies?
No.
Okay. Public hearing is closed at this time. Anybody for public comment?
No public comment.
All right. There'll be no public.
I think the superintendent would like to make some remarks.
All right. Dr. Mariano?
Okay.
The floor is yours.
Thank you. If you're here tonight to support the case curriculum, could you please stand up if you would, if you're here representing the Farm Bureau, the case curriculum? I would like to stay standing if you would. Thank you to all the speakers who are here this evening. On behalf of the Board of Education, we want to thank you. We do want to let you know where the, the status of this program is right now. Today, we had our budget work session. The board has encouraged me to continue to add that to the budget. There's a whole process we were going through with it. I encourage all of you with your level of commitment that you've shown tonight in front of our board to also be a part of the budget process with the Board of County Commissioners as the ultimate funding source for us. Right now, we have added it in as a part of our budget that I'm presenting to the school board and I really appreciate your advocacy this evening. To everybody who spoke tonight, thank you for doing that. And again, to our young people who are still in school, go home and get a good night's rest because you have school tomorrow and we'll proceed accordingly in that sense. That's wishful thinking. And we move forward. But board, board members, I wanted you to see the number of people who've come out tonight. And there's also been the acknowledgement of Michael Egan who's back in the corner there somewhere. He is responsible for the implementation right now and we'll have further information from him. So thank you very much for coming out.
Thank you for attending this evening. Be nice to have agriculture back at the Forrest Center, part of the curriculum, there's no question about it. Is there a motion to, to approve the consent agenda?
I move to approve the consent agenda as presented.
We have a motion? Do we have a second?
I second it.
Everyone in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone oppose? The ayes have it. There are no action items tonight. Moving along into information items. The first information item we have is the St. Mary's County Public Schools Kindergarten Update, Maryland Model of School Readiness. Mrs. Hall and Ms. Cindy Kilcoyne.
Thank you.
Okay, just begin whenever you're ready.
Okay.
Good evening. We're happy to be here. Mrs. Kilcoyne and I are going to speak to the status of kindergarten and give you an update on our Maryland Model for School Readiness Assessment and our results. And right now, just kind of the lay of the land, our kindergarten students participate in a full day of developmentally appropriate activities and practices. Enrollment as of December was 1,349 students. And each classroom is taught by a highly qualified early childhood educator as well as a para educator. So we're very fortunate to have that staffing. Okay, Mrs. Kilcoyne will walk through what a typical day looks like and the kinds of things that students are learning to do.
Our activities include whole group instruction and then in the smaller group instruction, we do guided reading, math instruction, social studies and science, and then our developmentally appropriate choice centers, which is of course the children's favorite time of the day. They get to choose what they would like to learn about for that day. Just a couple of pictures to share with you of the typical daily schedule. Our teachers present it to children in many different ways. This is just two ways that we've seen.
Foundational math patterns, and this is one of the things that our children do, is learn a lot about patterning. And this, the second picture is a picture from one of our elementary schools where the children did an activity with red, yellow, and green apples, and then they each placed one in the hallway. It took the entire hallway of the school to illustrate that cool graph of what they all like to do. And then assessing the learning, our teachers, it's very important that our teachers are constantly looking at what the children are learning and assessing how they're learning. And so, in that portfolio assessment that we'll talk about in a minute, MMSR, there are opportunities for the teacher to collect actual samples of the children's work, and here are just two times that we saw that happening. And the Maryland Model for School Readiness is a portfolio assessment, and it's assessed using ratings in the eight domains of learning, which you see listed there, and it is collected... It is a work sampling system, so data is collected through daily work with the children. And in the fall, a portfolio is begun for each child as they enter. For the first six to eight weeks of school, teachers are collecting all that data, and then observational reporting to the state happens in November, and then they continue to collect through the rest of the year, and it's reported again in the spring. How we are doing?
Okay, we're very proud of this. This is our own personal grad rate. You can see...
It's a day of success.
Here we go. You can take a look at, as Dr. Marterano says, let me quote him, I've been retweeting him all day. Let, let, data is all a relative thing, and how do we compare? So, what you see is the Maryland Model of School Readiness. Maryland's rate is eighty-two percent, and then you can see our rate of eighty-eight percent, and then our neighboring counties of Charles and Calvert. And I'm proud to say, on this assessment, we are doing very well. We're outperforming our neighboring counties, and we're also outperforming the state. We're very proud of that.
And that's where it starts. That leads to graduation.
As always, we have a new assessment system coming. The Early Childhood Comprehensive Assessment System is the first project in the Early Learning Challenge Grant, which is a partnership between Maryland and Ohio, and it's just one part of that Early Learning Challenge Grant, and the hallmark of that whole thing is the kindergarten entrance assessment. And we're learning about that as we go. They did a blind field test of that assessment in December, and two of our schools were part of that blind field test. They're now collecting all that data, looking at it, and deciding how we're going to roll that out. And then kindergarten assessment is an assessment of seven domains of learning, which are listed for you there: social, emotional, physical motor, language and literacy, math, scientific thinking, social studies, and the arts. Kindergarten is a wonderful learning experience, and we want everybody to know, learning is fun. And now, we have just a short video to share with all of you, just a video of one of our teachers, of whom we're quite proud, Ms. Courtney Tyra, is a kindergarten teacher at George Washington Carver, and we have a video of one of her lessons.
Oh, where's Maddie now? Is she in for sure?
It's very green.
Did she sit in the air?
What did we have to do? I'm looking for five and focus our solutions. How did we fix the problem? If it didn't understand, we'd... Doctor? What did you do to all these crazy ideas? Like five more minutes of watching TV? What did you do?
No. You said no, and you...
Nor it can. You didn't follow his trick. So, today, you're going to have a problem. Is it already written out for you?
No.
So, what are we going to have to do? We're going to have to think, we're going to have to write it in. All right, the first one is...
It.
How do you spell it?
It.
I. What kind of I have in your...
I.
I have a face for a汉字, I.
It.
F. My, let's alter it with a little more, with a little more. My, let her read all of her. And... God, I think it's like two of mine. And, great job, you can shake down that.
And why?
All right, tell them, spell it.
And why?
And?
Why?
What kind of... Well, I said...
Oh.
Ah. And then, oh, and then tell them all.
Mm-hmm.
Ah.
It's my friend Will, not beautiful, never, you look so cute, although we're...
Is that a real problem? You have had before? Please, man, you have a problem before.
My friend will not play with me. I get that problem a lot at recess. So, it's...
Imagine you are at recess. It's right, it's something, you're a little silly, and your friend will not play with you. Your problem is my friend will not play with me. I will... All right, justice. If my friend will not play with me, I will, what you do is...
How do you do?
Can you give him a chocolate bar?
Oh.
If you're... Yeah, yeah, yeah. If I was... So, I will give them a chocolate bar.
That is the status of our kindergarten at this time. Thank you.
Well, thank you very, very much. Board members, comments, questions? Mrs. Allen?
It's always nice to see what our students are doing. We all are in and out of schools often, but I think we all think back to the days of our early education, whether it was kindergarten or first grade, and you have this vision of what it was. I don't ever remember sitting in a classroom at any level and having a teacher say, "This is the problem, what are our solutions?" And the fact that we're doing it in kindergarten, giving students those tools to solve problems, how powerful that is. Solving problems when they're little problems and teaching them the steps they need to go through gives them great conflict management skills, it gives them great thinking skills, and it allows them to be creative, and I just think that's wonderful. So, thank you for taking the time to share this with us this evening. I really appreciate it.
Mrs. Washington?
That was a wonderful presentation, and what I appreciate mostly is that you're teaching children how to problem solve, how to be problem solvers, really, the first steps to being critical thinkers. You know, that this is the problem, and that I do have choices. I do have choices, and I think it's great that you're teaching such skills in kindergarten. And one other thing I love, many things, but I'll just say one more, is for children to develop a love for reading. That is key, developing a love for reading. Now, how do you deal with students who are already reading when they enter kindergarten? Because many of them are already reading.
What you would have seen in this lesson is that the list is very, very differentiated. When she did the reading, the writing at the beginning, each of those children then receives a paper where they are writing at their own level, a problem and a solution. So, that's, and that was part of the lesson, but it didn't make it into that tape. But so, it's, the lessons are all very, very differentiated, depending on what you are able to do, that's what you're taught, and you're taught at that level, and you keep moving forward. That's why we're looking at a lot of small group instruction, so we can instruct everybody kind of where they are.
Wonderful. That's great. Thank you so much.
Mr. Matthews?
I think you all are doing fantastic. The MSSR data is top-notch. Keep up the good work. Thank you very much.
Mrs. Crosby?
Yeah, I think you are too. It seems to me that mandatory kindergarten for all, is it 'oh, seven or 'oh, eight? One or the other?
Seven, I think.
It was required by then. We actually implemented it a bit earlier than that.
And we're thirteen now, five years later. All this really helps, and it also helps the grandparents spend a lot of money on the kindergarten, telling them, I know about that. Oh, I had a question here. And the solution and the problem solving is very important all the way through for all of us in life. I thought that was good. How many kids, there you go, how many kids are in the class? Twenty?
There are, like, twenty-three in that class.
With an assistant, correct? Very good, very good. Thank you very much for all you did.
Thank you, Mrs. Crosby. Great job. Keep up the good work.
Thank you.
Excellent.
Thank you very much.
Please relay to the teacher that's doing a great job, please.
Absolutely. Thank you very much.
Dr. Marterano, you have a comment?
No, I'm just, I mean, I've said so much today about the data, and it's just... For me to say that I'm speechless is not true, but for the sake of the meeting time, I will, they know how I feel, they know the words, the early interventions, it just adds another problem. We gave them a huge shout-out today during our presentation, and it starts with the literacy piece and the numeracy. So, echo that, what the goal is in terms of our entire school system, that everybody in this school district needs to feel responsible for the data and take great pride in the work. So, when we talk about that singular number of a graduation rate and what it means to our community, everybody takes responsibility for that, and share that with your early intervention teachers, our pre-K, Head Start, the whole piece in terms of kindergarten, all of it. It's just important. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Can I say something? And they're building a firm foundation for these students, so they can go on to be graduates and then become productive, contributing members of society, so we don't have to deal with that dropout rate. If we get them a good, solid foundation in Head Start, pre-K, kindergarten, our students are well on their way, so you are part of that important piece to get our students to graduate and to graduate on time.
Absolutely, it starts there.
Yep. Thank you.
Okay, moving along. Dr. Ridgell. Twenty-fourteen, twenty-fifteen school operating calendars.
Good evening.
Tonight is the first reading for the two thousand fourteen, two thousand and fifteen school system calendars, both the school system operational calendar and the Chesapeake Public Charter School calendar. The public hearing will be held at the February twelfth meeting, and the second reading for your approval will be at the February twenty-sixth meeting. I remind everyone, this is only a proposed calendar, and it is not official until your approval on February twenty-sixth. The school system operational calendar was developed by a committee of teachers, principals, assistant principals, central office representatives, as well as representatives from the Education Association of St. Mary's County, the Collective Education Association of St. Mary's County, and the County Council of PTAs. The charter school calendar was developed by the governing board. Ms. Funia is here to answer any questions this evening as well. The proposed operational calendar before you has several changes from past years. One is to shift the August professional days around to be more effective to meet teachers' needs, shift the early dismissals to a consistent day of the week to the extent possible, and Tuesday will be that day. Switch the purposes of the September and January professional days to align the professional development with each semester, and provide Head Start and pre-kindergarten parent involvement activities on early dismissal days to provide structured parent engagement activities. I'll talk about each of these as we come to them in the calendar. First one, then, is the back-to-school professional days for staff. This would be the proposed calendar for the four professional days before school opens. Note that the school system and the charter school are proposing rearranging the days to facilitate classroom preparation time. So, the classroom preparation day would be on the Friday for the school system, August the fifteenth. Normally, it's Monday with the professional day on Friday, so this would reverse them. Teachers would then have Friday, the fifteenth, to prepare their classrooms. The professional day would then be held on Monday. The charter school is proposing rearranging their days as well to facilitate that classroom The first day of schools for students will be on a Wednesday to facilitate any opening adjustment versus going five straight days for the first week. For the school system, that would be Wednesday, August the twentieth. For the charter school, that is Wednesday, August the sixth. Labor Day is a holiday for students and staff, so all schools and offices are closed. There is no school for students with a school-based professional day for staff. Note that this is one, another one of the changes in the professional days. Normally, this would be a county-wide professional day. That will shift, then, to January the sixteenth, so there would be a professional day countywide in August, when in January, at the beginning of each of the semesters. Instead, September the nineteenth would then become a school-based professional day. The proposal is to maintain the Parent and Guardian Conference Day on Columbus Day, would be October the thirteenth. Historically, we have found this day to be family-friendly, given many parents have the day off from work. The Maryland State Education Association's convention includes Friday, October the seventeenth. There is no school for students with a school-based professional day for staff. The general election is on Tuesday, November the fourth. Since many schools as used as polling places, all schools and offices would be closed. All schools and offices are closed for Veterans Day on November the eleventh. The Thanksgiving holiday includes Wednesday to provide time for families to travel, so then it would be Wednesday, Thursday, and Friday, the schools would be closed, and then reopen the following Monday, December the first. Winter break, schools would close on Friday, December the nineteenth, and reopen on January the fifth. Including weekends, this would be sixteen consecutive days. January sixteenth, then, would be that other system-wide professional day for staff, no school for students. This is one of those changes. This would permit a system-wide, again, professional day at the beginning of each of the semesters, critical as we talk about the implementation of the college and career-ready standards and the park assessments. All schools and offices are closed on Martin Luther King Jr.'s birthday, January the nineteenth. Aligned with the January sixteenth professional day, this creates a four-day weekend for students. President's Day is a holiday, so all schools and offices are closed in February the sixteenth. Spring break will be ten days, an ideal opportunity for family trips instead of missing school days, so schools would close on Friday, March the twenty-seventh, and reopen on Tuesday, April seventh. No school for students on Friday, May first, articulation day. Articulation day is used to facilitate the transition of students between grades and among the schools for the next school year. There is no school for students with a school-based professional day for staff. Note that this is one, another one of the changes in the professional days. Normally, this would be a county-wide professional day. That will shift then to January the sixteenth. So there would be a professional day countywide in August, when in January at the beginning of each of the semesters. Instead, September the nineteenth would then become a school-based professional day. The proposal is to maintain the Parent and Guardian Conference Day on Columbus Day, would be October the thirteenth. Historically, we have found this day to be family-friendly, given many parents have the day off from work. The Maryland State Education Association's convention includes Friday, October the seventeenth. There is no school for students with a school-based professional day for staff. The general election is on Tuesday, November the fourth. Since many schools as used as polling places, all schools and offices would be closed. All schools and offices are closed for Veterans Day on November the eleventh. The Thanksgiving holiday includes Wednesday to provide time for families to travel. So then it would be Wednesday, Thursday, and Friday, the schools would be closed, and then reopen the following Monday, December the first. Winter break, schools would close on Friday, December the nineteenth, and reopen on January the fifth. Including weekends, this would be sixteen consecutive days. January sixteenth then would be that other system-wide professional day for staff, no school for students. This is one of those changes. This would permit a system-wide again professional day at the beginning of each of the semesters. Critical as we talk about the implementation of the college and career-ready standards and the PARC assessments. All schools and offices are closed on Martin Luther King Jr.'s birthday, January the nineteenth. Aligned with the January sixteenth professional day, this creates a four-day weekend for students. President's Day is a holiday, so all schools and offices are closed in February the sixteenth. Spring break will be ten days, an ideal opportunity for family trips instead of missing school days. So schools would close on Friday, March the twenty-seventh, and reopen on Tuesday, April seventh. No school for students on Friday, May first, Articulation Day. Articulation Day is used to facilitate the transition of students between grades and among the schools for the next school year. It is also designated as a professional inclement weather makeup day if needed.
Every turn of the day brings that unpleasant.
Memorial Day, May twenty-fifth, no school for students and staff. The proposed calendar also includes time for staff collaborative planning. Critical for lesson planning and the monitoring of student learning as we implement the college and career-ready standards and PARC assessments. And the days for collaborative planning varies between the school system and the charter school. The calendar also includes early dismissals for professional responsibilities, as well as the Head Start and pre-K parent involvement activities. Professional responsibilities, of course, include grading and report cards at the time for the end of the interim and marking periods. The charter school also provides early dismissals for staff to complete the narrative report cards. Since the charter school opens ten days before the other schools, their calendar provides for three recesses during the year. October sixth to the tenth, February twelfth and thirteenth, and May twentieth and twenty-second. The last day for students will be June sixteenth. This includes five built-in days for inclement weather that will be backed off if not needed. That would make the earliest June ninth if the inclement weather days are not needed. Keep in mind, this is the fourteen, fifteen school year calendar, not the current one. And the last day for teachers would be June seventeenth if the five days of inclement weather is used. Any questions?
Maybe there'll be a resurgence of global warming. You notice there's not been much talking about that recently?
Dr. Rigel, thank you very much. Board members, questions, comments? Mrs. Crosby.
Yeah. Maybe I'll have to have my daughter call you. Like she claims there's a big rebellion in Wildwood about having to get up too early. I think all the elementary, I mean, they're all gonna be going to middle school and they wanna sleep on her. So should it be, can you give me a simple answer to give her? I was gonna throw it off on you, but you might as well let me have it.
I have not, do not know of any changes in school starting times.
It's pretty early though for middle school, isn't it?
For the first day of school?
For throughout the year, isn't it?
Are you talking about the start of the time of the day?
Yes.
Okay, so it's different than...
That's, yeah, that's not the calendar committee. That's, that's based on many other factors besides the calendar.
Oh, my goodness. Yeah, I sure, oh, yeah, I know. We'd have to probably buy a whole raft of new buses to accommodate every little one.
It's, it's, starting times are complicated.
Yeah, I'm sure it is. Has it ever come up before?
Not to the calendar committee because we don't do start times.
Thank you very much, Mr. Rigel.
But since it's been brought up, go ahead.
Dr. Monorani, you ready?
I would just provide some clarity there. I mean, when we're talking about the calendar, it's interesting because the fact there's a... As we've talked about this in the past, once you put in all the must-haves, there's not a lot of flexibility.
Correct.
So I appreciate the work that you do in regards to this, and then the compatibility with the compare and contrast of the charter school. We have a principal here tonight as well, and you do a great job. There's certain inherent values that dictate that. Great conversation across the state right now regarding starting school after Labor Day. Superintendent's have come out and have opposed that. I presented testimony to task force on that recently. But that's in motion and you need to be aware of that as it plays implications because that could be accelerated in the process. So we'll keep an eye on that. As far as Mrs. Crosby's concerns regarding the school start times for the day, this county has actually made some moves prior to my arrival to make that adjustment because it's a large county. We have a tiered system as far as our buses, and we've made the decision to put the high schoolers in the middle tier of that run. Excuse me, the high schoolers in the middle tier, middle schools at first, and...
They're in the early.
Yeah, so middle school, high school, elementary in terms of that tier. And when you have the system of which we have, you have to do that, you know, in that sense, because we don't have enough buses just for high school and then elementary and then high school.
I told her that.
So we adjusted for the developmental issues, the adolescent pieces of high schoolers needing more sleep. We also have a longer day than some of the other school districts where we're six hours.
Oh, good. I'm glad you told me that one.
We're six hours and forty-five minutes.
Hold on, I got it.
But this is getting great attention because I was surprised that we were, we've been rather progressive because we dealt with this issue a while ago. Montgomery County is now dealing with that issue, and everything that we have in place, Montgomery County is moving to, to tier their systems away that we have it. They have it right now where it's high school, middle, elementary. They're flip-flopping the high school and middle, and then they have a, they're adjusting the time of their day too because they have a shorter elementary day. So they're making it more compatible with what we have. So that's, that's a challenge. We continue to work with parents. And the middle schoolers, you know, have to make certain that we get them prepared by starting, going to bed earlier, getting up earlier. And it's a process for them. We receive very few concerns about that throughout the year, in fact, nonexistent, quite frankly.
She's gonna have to get onto the county council.
Yeah, and express that. But then the other piece is, again, I always use the statement for reaction, there's an equal and opposite reaction.
Yeah.
What are the alternatives and how do we do that? We've gone through the internal, how could we just shave off ten minutes? That within itself, I have never seen such a challenge just to shave off ten minutes, to move the starting time back ten minutes. Because then, again, sort of like, you know, whack-a-mole, you hit one head down, the next one pops up. Okay, we take care of that front load, then we push everything back ten minutes further. It starts impacting the athletic schedules. Then you get into daylight savings, a later pickup time for the elementary kids. So what we've tried to do is strike the right balance between the developmental issues. And I'm talking about this calendar-wise too, strike the right balance between family time, longer summers, the instructional hours, one hundred and eighty days, the teacher's contract, all the must-haves, and then balance that with the length of the student day and manage that with the teacher workday as well. I think we probably have hit the right balance with it, but there's always gonna be a consideration because somebody's gonna feel like in elementary, we like sleeping later. There's always gonna be somebody who wants to start earlier in that sense. The piece of it is, Mrs. Crosby, and I appreciate if the community of Wildwood is advancing to the middle school level, I encourage them to either ask us to come speak to them, which we're always available to do, to explain them in terms of the information.
Let me write that down, too?
Write that down. We're always available to speak to community. And then to talk to the principals, you know, they spend time. I can tell you, Ms. Mills does a fabulous job of advancing to the middle school level of those and what that is. And then you also know, my final piece, Dr. Raspa, thank you for allowing me the opportunity to talk. The, also the other issue is all of our academies and our STEM programs and different things have the hub bus systems, and they run a little earlier as well, you know, in terms of getting there and what needs to be done. In the scheme of it, if we were a smaller county in an urban county where, you know, you have tightly compacted neighborhoods, we don't. So therefore, we have the long routes. It takes longer to get to places than other places. But when I worked in Montgomery and Howard and Prince George's tightly compact neighborhoods, a run from the elementary to move to the middle to the high was a lot less time in terms of travel from one school to the next. So you could have a little bit more of a level of compression. So I just brought that whole picture up as it ties into the calendar. Not to get it mixed up. One is calendar and one is start time. And again, both of these topics are getting, getting some attention in the legislative session. There's a bill out there regarding start times generated as a result of the conversation around Montgomery County. So thank you.
Well, thank you.
Yep.
Thank you, Dr. Monorani. Mr. Matthews?
Thank you, Dr. Rigel. No questions.
Mrs. Washington?
I see something very interesting. It says early dismissals for professional responsibilities and Head Start and pre-kindergarten parent involvement activities. Could you share?
One of the, the great things about having Head Start this year is being able to increase the amount of work with the families in addition to having the students in school. So we'd like to expand that to the pre-kindergarten families as well next year so that in being able to use those designated days, it could be for the teachers to go out on home visits. It could be for the families to come to school, for parent conferences. It could be for other school-related kinds of activities, to be able to work more closely, the school and the families.
That's interesting. Could you tell more what those activities would be? I mean, you give a general, and I wanna know a little bit more.
Did you really emphasize the fact that currently when there's those early dismissal days, we had an inequity in terms of AM and PM?
We did that all the time.
So let's make sure we're framing this at the higher level. The recommendation this year, and I appreciate you bringing the question up, Mrs. Washington, I will get to that. But I wanna make certain we understand, before we would have AM, PM, and you would have maybe five, ten more days, right? Instruction for one versus the other. What we've gone back to do is to provide, the only way to provide equity because the, every canceling AM, PM one day and PM in the morning, it just doesn't work.
Right.
We had so much confusion regarding buses. We've now said on those days, there will be no AM or PM, correct?
Correct.
On those days, because there, the developmental needs that need to occur for the young people, they're going, gonna be going into the homes, working with the families, bringing them in for training, how to be parenting skills, a whole series of things that we feel are necessary in terms of the Head Start curriculum. There's a whole different level of curriculum even when we think of how the young people are eating in terms of family style. But working with the parents is critical in terms of skills needed for parenting, reading, developmental issues, maturation, any ways that we can assist. So the teachers are not gonna have a day of kicking back, but their day is going to be devoted to servicing the young people at a different level. And we can generate a whole series of lists of things occurring, and this has been very, 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 because we view it as... Trying to think of the proverb about teaching someone to fish as opposed, can't quite think of it exactly, but that's the philosophy. We wanna teach the parents how to be better parents, working with the family so that can carry on for generations. It's that parent liaison, the parent support. Because if you remember the parents who qualify for this program, it's, it's a certain level of economic issues and a level of disadvantaged in terms of that, so we wanna provide that gap. We were also very concerned about the poverty gap, the needs that the young people had as far as shoes, clothing, immunizations. We can talk firsthand with the nurse who is in place, who is in place at that program and the needs for the young people. But the great need is that we can work with the young people, but if we're not assisting the parents as well, the work that we're doing in school, then there's that level of regression. So I'm very pleased of this, but I'm sorry we didn't illuminate that at a higher level because this has been a conversation at this dais for years.
Oh, yes.
About the inequity of AM, PM. And I think this is a really good recommendation because there's no, at the same time, meeting the requirements. Anything you wanna say on that? I mean, I don't know if I'm doing a justice.
That's interesting. Yeah.
Okay, very good.
You know, it's about family engagement. It's about bringing families.
Come on up to the podium, I'm sorry. Come on up here. Yeah, it's a great idea.
It's about family engagement, and it's about bringing families together and helping parents learn the parenting skills as well as how to prepare their children so that our readiness for kindergarten continues to be what it is right now. And what we see is that in providing the kinds of learning that we'll be providing by bringing parents into school or going into their homes will allow us to teach them what they need to know in order to get their children ready to be here when they come to kindergarten.
You know, for our pre-K program, you know, we're trying to align it, you know, a four-year-old program, whether it's Head Start or pre-kindergarten, those teachers have forty students. And that's been difficult to get all of those families into conference. This will be, will help us ensure that we can, we can do that, that every family will have the opportunity for a conference. Certainly, some will have home visits. There may be some parent training workshops specifically for early childhood as we work through it. But, but really, at the calendar committee, the idea of conferencing and making that doable was, was well received by the teachers that were present and also the parents and the PTA members that were present.
Well, Kelly, also illuminate the data, and this is data that we can share because it's a general piece of data. We had a number of, how many students were enrolled the first day for Head Start?
Oh, a hundred and sixty-one.
Yeah, so to give you an example of a need for intervention, of those a hundred and sixty-one, only a few had their immunization records.
Right.
Up to where it needed to be.
Right.
And when I say a few, I'm using a hand, and it's less than what's on my hand out of a hundred and sixty-one.
We had to...
So you see what I'm talking about here?
Yes, yes. See, that's what I wanted specificity as to what involvement activities would be going on. Because it's, I applaud this. I think it's wonderful, but I want to know what exactly are you doing? You know, not general, but...
We had to follow up with each one of those families at that level to engage individuals. Same way I said about the buses, we had to follow up specifically with each one of those families to designate that bus area, train them how to, where to get the day, all those things. And then we had to go back and make arrangements for them to get the immunization necessary with the family. And that's labor-intensive in that sense. We only have one nurse in that program, as I keep looking back in the back room.
Yeah, because I'm sure you have very young parents too as well. Because I remember years ago, Title I had programs for parents, and one of them was how to have an effective parent conference. Some of the basic things, if you're having a problem with your child's teacher, what do you do? Or if your child comes home and tell you this, what do you do? I mean, some of the basics things that a lot of people take for granted that a lot of people may not know. Give the teacher a chance. You talk to the classroom teacher first before you call the principal or the superintendent or a board member. So I think this is, well, wonderful what you're doing. And I would like to hear more about it, like the classes you're gonna teach, what are the programs you're gonna do to help these parents because it gives them a solid foundation on how to work well with the school system because maybe some of those parents didn't have a good experience with the school system. So I think this is great, and it's six days that you can do this.
Right.
So I, I think that's...
Well, you know, the other piece too, Mrs. Washington, it's a wonderful conversation. And the piece is, if we could ever get to the point where when a child is born, you know, we spend great time with them as soon as they're born about what needs to be done for a healthy lifestyle and a healthy advancement for the developmental and maturation process. I've always talked about the need for a prescription for the development of the mind, what needs to occur. Not all parents are trained to be parents. You know, they're not, all of a sudden, just because you have a child does not mean you're gonna be an effective parent. We recognize that. We recognize the challenges that individuals who have less fortunate means, what that means for them and the struggles that they're going. At the same time, a child should not be harmed or put in a position because of a family structure of which they're born into, should they be disadvantaged. That's all bears out in the research. That bears out in terms of unequal childhoods, the book by Annete LaRoe. And that's where it talks about the achievement gap starts at birth. And so all of these intentions, I'm very proud of this because it gets to that actual one-on-one intervention and recognizes the challenges that the parents may have. We're going to them. We've built the time in. We value it. Something you've advocated for from more parent liaisons. And to acknowledge that, those are the courageous conversations and putting those actions in place. So I'm very proud of that. And I'm really delighted that we're talking about that because that's a huge shift in our calendar that was brought up in part of our conversation about the inequity of the AM, PM days on early dismissal days and how we manage that. And then you add into snow days and, I mean, all that stuff, you know, so...
And everything else.
And everything else. So thanks for the opportunity to talk about that.
Thank you. This is really interesting and cutting edge. Thank you.
Thank you.
It's great.
It is.
I really appreciate that you have addressed the inequity. It's, it's the question I ask you every year. Why are we doing this? What can we do to make sure these students are, are given every opportunity? And I think that what you've proposed is an excellent way to address that. And, and I, so I appreciate the out-of-the-box thinking, and I know that this is a proposal and that it's something that you will obviously be fleshing out over the rest of this school year and into the next. And so I would echo Mrs. Washington's request that perhaps sometime after the start of school next year, that as you have those plans more fully developed, that you might bring those forward to us either through an information item or a board update, because I would like to know more about it as well. So thank you all very much. And lastly... And lastly, to your point about the ongoing discussion about when to start school, I think your comment about the fact that it's sort of like whack-a-mole, if you do something here, something over here pops up, I think what we need to continue to stress to our delegation is that we have eight days of school prior to Labor Day. If we take those off of the front end, they have to go somewhere. And so I sat here as the discussions were going on, and I looked at the end of the calendar. That would mean, if this were to pass, that our students would be in school until Friday, June twenty-sixth.
Right.
So, and when you, when you take into account when our various assessments are done, and those are set often by the college board, or by the state, or by the feds, those are typically given, you know, earlier in the spring. So you're talking about much less, you're talking about losing eight significant days of instruction.
Yes, you are.
And I just, I understand where they're going with it, but I think it just reflects the fact that they truly do not understand the, what we function under, and you can't take, you can't move off of one end without impacting the other end. So thank you for all the work you did on this. I know that once you put in all the must-haves, the rest of it just sort of plays itself out, and it is a function of when Christmas and New Year's fall this year that provide us the once-in-awhile, longer winter break. I guess that's the time the superintendent's gonna put word out, that that's, that's when we need to be wearing our pajamas inside out and backwards, so if we want snow, it needs to come for white Christmas.
May I, Dr. Aspa, I know we're looking at time, but Mrs. Allen brings up a great point. Angela, I'm gonna ask that you make certain that your charter school is following the work regarding the post-Labor Day. I advocated on your behalf about our charter school, but as it stands now, there was no recognition of a variance based upon the fact of a charter school designation. So I said, I've got a very unique model that I've tried to advance for the total community to embrace for our school system, that addresses the summer regression, the summer gap, keeps kids in school longer, in terms of, I should say, in terms of engagement, talked intently about that, and was concerned. I would ask your network to tune in. I was early morning greeted by an email where I was asked to provide more information about the, how would it look? And very clearly stated what Mrs. Allen said, you only have so many options, and that would push it into June, and I need to put the school system and the community on notice. It starts very clearly tinkering with things that we've put in at the issue of the local control. That's why we're advocating for local control, because I would immediately have to recommend to this board that we could not go to June twenty-sixth at that level because of other things that we have. So we have to start looking at spring break, other-ish things that we've put in that we know, compressing different breaks, looking at our professional development, all those things that are valuable to what makes our system work, and that was the advocacy level promoted. It was tinkering with local control, because we all have unique variables. And so I want you all just to sort of tune into that as this conversation is occurring, but the movement up front is to move this to after Labor Day. And there is one chapter in the book called "Outliers" on page two-hundred-and-fifty, talks about the Kip School and a study out of Johns Hopkins that refutes that whole notion, and talks about more time, extending school years, longer days, et cetera, and at the same time, valuing the need for downtime with family, et cetera. But it all can be balanced out, particularly when you're talking about these issues in total. So I ask the charter school to tune into that, irrelevantly look at that. Thank you, I'm quiet.
Thank you. Dr. Marrowan. Dr. Rigel, thank you very much, as usual, great job. Mrs. Hall, thank you for the input. And Mrs. Pilcoyne, thank you very, very much. And I remember years and years ago, I used to chair that committee.
It's a tough one. It might be easier if he told us what he hadn't done in the school system.
And once I got through, I don't advocate, Dr. Rigel, that you proceed with this, but I thought many a time it was time for me to go see a psychiatrist.
That's a wonderful group of people.
Thank you very much. Future board meetings, the public budget hearing on the FY 2015 operating budget will be held on Wednesday, February the fifth, 2014, at six PM here in this room, and the next regular board meeting will be held on Wednesday, February the twelfth, 2014, at nine AM. This meeting is adjourned.